Good evening. Welcome to our December 6, 2022 city council meeting. The time is 7:00 PM. Meeting is now in session. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Antonio Rodriguez from Calvary Chapel, New Beginnings West Covina, and Councilman Wu will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise, please.
God, our Father, and the Lord Jesus Christ, we thank you for your love, your mercy, and your grace. We thank you for allowing us to live in this time in human history, in this country, in this state, and in this country. We thank you for the city council of West Covina that you appointed, this legislative body who is responsible for the policies and direction for our city. We thank you for the wisdom and the knowledge that you impart. Our intellect, our hearts, our spirit, our strength, our talents, and our gifts were given to us by your sovereign grace. We know that everything exists because of you. We remember that you are on your heavenly throne accomplishing your will on earth. We acknowledge that everything created was created to bring you praise and honor. We thank you for the privilege to express our gratitude to you on this day. We thank you again for the men and women you place to serve and direct the city for such a time as this, most notably Mayor Dario Castellanos, Mayor Pro Tem Rosario Diaz, Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado, Councilwoman, Councilman Tony Wu, and Councilmember Brian Tabatabai. Now I humbly ask you, Lord, that you impart your knowledge, your understanding, and your wisdom upon this council in order that this meeting can effectively respond to the issues at hand. As they consider the resolution to adopt a revised conflict of interest code for the city, as they consider the resolution to determine the need to further continue the local emergency, as they consider ordinances numbers 2510, 2508, 2507, and 2506, as they consider the notice of completion for project numbers 22007, 22005, 22023, 22024, and 22004, as they consider the notice of completion and ratification of project number 18040, and they consider the agreement for project number 23028, and consider adopting resolution numbers 2022-124, 2022-119, 2022-125, 2022-126, and 2022-17. As they consider the agreement for landscape maintenance of citywide medians, right-of-ways, commercial zones, sidewalks, tree walls, and other areas, Lord, all of these things, I pray that their decisions made today will be fruitful and beneficial for us all. Lord, help us to be united for the common good of the city. Help us to see from your perspective and not our own. Help us to be concerned for all, especially the poor and those in need. Help us to pray and support our leaders in this city, rendering honor to whom honor. And lastly, help us to be a people that bring you glory and honor. In closing, I thank you, Heavenly Father, and our Lord Jesus Christ, for giving us your ear to hear this humble request as you direct us all, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Please put your right hand to your heart and face the flag and follow my lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Tabatabai?
Present.
Councilman Wu?
Yep.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Diaz?
Here.
Mayor Castellanos?
Here.
Mr. City Attorney, is there anything to be reported at a closed session?
Nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. There are no presentations today, so we'll move on past that section of the agenda. But we do, before we begin oral communications, have an adjournment that Councilman Wu has asked that we recognize. So this is in memory of Ms. Betty Balag, who was born in Lawson, Missouri, on March 12, 1939. She was the first of six children that included three sisters and two brothers. She committed her life to Jesus as a young girl. In 1957, Betty's family moved from Clarinda, Iowa, to California. Betty graduated from Baldwin Park High School with the class of 1958. She received several business awards at Clarinda and Baldwin Park High Schools. She continued her business education at Mount SAC. She married Michael Balag in 1960 and settled in West Covina. The couple had their only child, Timothy Michael, in 1962. Betty had an accounting career with an electronics manufacturing company in Anaheim, where she continued to work up until her retirement in 2004. Her faith was paramount, and she made sure her son and husband were exposed to the gospel. Betty continued as a longtime resident of West Covina until her graduation to be with the Lord on November 14 this year. Her son and daughter-in-law continue to make West Covina their hometown. Betty is preceded in death by her husband, Michael, and both brothers, Grover and Guy, and Sister Barbara. She is survived by her sisters, Emma and Laverne, son Tim, and daughter-in-law Melissa, grandsons Jacob and his wife Casey, Joshua and his wife Kelsey, three great-granddaughters, Lily, Everly, and Charlotte. May she rest in peace and condolences to her family. After that adjournment, now we'll continue. And thank you, Councilman Wu, for bringing that forward. You're welcome. We'll now move on to oral communications. If anyone would like to address the council, please fill out a yellow speaker card and submit it to the Assistant City Clerk. Assistant City Clerk, how many speakers do we have tonight?
I have four speaker cards at this time, Mayor.
Thank you.
Our first speaker is Matt Smith, followed by Herman, followed by Lupe Amador.
Good evening, City Council. I am Matthew Smith, Vice President of the San Gabriel Valley Senior Softball Association. I'm going to try to come once a month and just give you a very brief update of what we're doing and give you a reflection of what the city does for us as well. This month, they are redoing the fields at the sports complex. So this isn't actually a complaint, this is a thank you, because they're going to be in great shape when we come back in January. So in the meantime, while they're being redone, we have actually moved to Cameron Park, where they have, we have a kind of super senior group, Monday, Friday playing, and now the other senior group that plays at the sports complex, they're there on Thursdays, probably for five or six weeks. I think we're going to return probably sometime second or third week of January after the reseating and other things are done up at the sports complex. Also, we're a bunch of old guys, and we aren't really big into fancy invitations, so this is a verbal invitation for you. Tomorrow, 4 to 6 o'clock, the San Gabriel Valley Softball Association is having their Christmas luncheon at Bun Street, and we would love if you guys are available. Drop in for a little time, the whole time, it'd be great. The organization's covering the cost for lunch tomorrow, but Bun Street, 4 to 6, we are having the Christmas luncheon. So hopefully, maybe somebody can make it to that as well. So thank you for your support. Looking forward to getting on the new fields about mid-January.
Thank you.
Herman, followed by Lupe Amador, followed by Elsie Messman.
we continue to procrastinate with the attorney regarding Mr. Bryley versus the City of West Covina Superior Court case number. And the fundamental of resolving mediations and terms is to not waste taxpayers' dollars. Otherwise, the attorney there, LLC, and his friends, like Omo, Olivares, Madurga, and the other idiots of LLC from Almani and from Los Angeles, just keep ripping off the public. And the public's unaware, because the public has never been in that transition to deal with local politicians that are criminals, corrupted politicians that are criminals, developers that are criminals, and people that engage in closed session with no transparency to admit that you're fucking stealing taxpayers' money, to pad your wallets, grease your hands, and like Mommy Lety Lopez there, don't wear a wedding ring no more, and it makes you question what the fuck's going on around here. You know, I'm not the most observant person in this world, but being at the Board of Supervisor hearing today, I realized that stealing 10 to 15 seconds of public comment is something very bad. Tells you that the Board of Supervisors continue to be fuck-ups. No offense to Hilda Alzaliz, but I made sure she heard me loud and clear that I am tired of fuck-ups. And fuck-ups come in many sizes, shapes, ethnic groups, backgrounds, and are idiots. Let's face it, society is filled with idiots that think they can get away with bullshit. Right, Mr. City Manager? And once you get caught, like a little squabbling little bitch, you crawl into your corner looking to escape the consequences of a federal bureau investigation, like the ones coming with, uh, not Inlander, because that fool ratted out Jose Luis Wezar and Mark Ridley Thomas. And let's find out how well the new mayor of Los Angeles does with the so-called gate cities that you guys have, and you all gather together and discuss the problems or the programmatic problems of what's happening in our communities. And let's face it, it's the same fucking shit. Homeless people here, homeless people there, homeless people everywhere you drive, and from what I heard and was told in the Board of Supervisor meeting this morning between 9:30 and 3:00, when it finished, was that the same fucking problems going on in every other state. So we just don't have a homeless crisis in West Covina. We got a homeless crisis throughout the state of California and the other states that dwell upon this bullshit. Fucking get out of the habit and just fix the problem. You're not going to fix it with money. You're going to fix it with brains, Mr. Mayor. And to all the assholes here that want to be a mayor one day, comes with brains. You can outthink somebody by thinking outside the box, but if the problem keeps going on and on, and it's a prolonged problem, guess what? At the end, you fucked up. You dropped the dime in the bucket, and the shit is on you now. So that's why, for the record, Caltrans has been informed that I plan to sue them. Metro has been informed I plan to sue them. And Mommy Diaz, who's on the transit here, is going to be aware about that as well, because using public transportation and AD infrastructure that's not available is a problem. The largest bank account in the world, and you fucking can't solve the problem.
Lupe Amador, followed by Elsie Messman.
So who'd I turn this into?
Thank you.
Thanks for the five minutes, sir. If it was five.
My name is Lupe Amador. I am the community manager at Friendly Village West Covina, and I just, I don't want to come up as a complaint, but I definitely want to work with the city to figure out a solution. I'm off of Valley and Santos, and we have a lot of landscape on Santos. It's a really big problem with an RV park there and activity going on, a lot of trash. They push it over to my property, then I get violation codes saying, hey, pick it up. So I'm out there myself every day picking up four or five bags of trash. I don't know if we can figure out a plan to maybe have no parking signs. Everybody parks their car there. There's always cars being broken into. When police is called, they take forever to get there, 30, 40 minutes, sometimes an hour. I had one of my residents have an issue with possible harassment, and they basically said, well, call, and if he comes in, I mean, call to see if we can get there on time. And so these are concerns that I get from my residents, and so I definitely want to be a voice for them and work and figure out a way to figure out the cleaning of Santos Street and figuring out a way for the first responders to come and help us when we need help, since we are in the outskirts of West Covina. Kind of not forget about us, that we're out there.
We've got a question from Councilman Wu.
Okay, a quick question. How long ago, you said the problems still happening over there? Just recently or a month ago?
For Santos?
Yes, Santos and Valley, right?
Recently. I was literally there on Monday. Took me two hours to pick up that whole street, and I'm picking up trash from the street because it's a reflection of the city, it's a reflection of my poverty, and I take pride in where, you know, where I work and also the city. So yeah, just Monday, I was there two hours.
I was there, okay. I talked to the city manager and police chief, okay. I saw the problem, and then we have probably worked people to call, went over there one time to clean it. So, but the problems do exist. The police didn't show up to mark the car parking there forever?
No, I, I mean, I never seen police there, never. And I'm, I sent my maintenance guy, I put it part of his daily agenda to go clean up that area every single day, Monday through Friday, and then one person on the weekend.
Thank you so much. We tried to improve it.
Thank you.
Elsie Messman, followed by John Schumaker.
Good evening, council staff and everyone here and at home. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. In October, I requested a public document that our council members stated that we had 3,539 new businesses in 2022. The city replied, saying that they do not have documents on file, on file. Having worked in different offices for 45 years, don't all new businesses have to have a business license from the city? But to be honest with you, I think the number that was given is just to make somebody look Now looking back at the election, with the results in District 5, 55% of those who voted did not approve Councilman Wu. There's a lot of people from different districts feel the same way. I guess you can say he's not as smart as he thought he was. Another interesting subject is why do we have two assistant managers, and why has not one been let go? I guess if you play the game, you can stay as long as you want, because that seems to be the way the city works. Remember our ex-police chief, Mark Taylor, and our ex-fire chief, Larry Witthorn? They were both let go and have filed lawsuits against the city. We have not heard of the results yet, and we are paying for attorney fees. There has been some improvements made by the city, but potholes and graffiti were not included. Council does not listen to residents. They have wasted more money trying to unite people. Instead, they're dividing people. A perfect example is a festival at the Sportsplex in 2000, in West Covina, because only 2,000 residents of West Covina went. The tax dollars could have been, the taxes and the money they spent, they could have had it in any park. St. Poli is a landfill, and now, how many meetings did we have and have to pay staff for another failure? Amazon is gone. Don't believe that residents, that you don't put a business in a residential area. Another failure. Now the maintenance yard, they want to sell that. Is it necessary? Then we have a health department issue, an engineering company trying to start a health department in West Covina. After all these years, we have been paying our taxes for health services, and now they don't qualify. So we will be paying twice. I have heard from, I haven't heard of any other city in West Covina that this city has spoken to is switching their medical to go on their own. I think it's a, we are paying a price that's wasting taxpayers' money again. And by the way, on October 18, the city manager was going to send a copy of the TransTech contract. I haven't received it yet. Did I hold my breath? With the economy as in shambles, this city has to watch how they spend money. We have council members here that are yes people, and that doesn't work in this day and age. You need to talk to more people and evaluate every project. Remember, this city belongs to the people, not the council. If I'm not back for the next meeting, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and I want to congratulate our new council member, Oli Cantus. Thank you.
John Schumaker.
Do the decent thing, resign. Ginger Elliott, Rosario Elliott, Rosario Diaz, or whatever name you are known, you should not accept the position of mayor and should immediately resign from office. Reasons are simple and clear. You have clearly stated you were elected to represent District 3, and if you not live in District 3, do not contact me. Matter of fact, you tell people in District 3, do not contact you. Now you must, as mayor, represent the entire city. You're married to William Wild Bill Elliott, a person who has called for the council to recruit, recruit more white families to the city. He said it was in the name of diversity. Well, West Covina does not have the national average of African-Americans, but he does not call for the city to recruit more black families in the name of diversity. The same person who has called for a renter's license to track renters, who we know may, more likely than not, you have a certain economic and ethnic background. The same person who blames the licensing, the same person who has called immigrants and dreamers cockroaches, the same person who blames the licensing of immigrants for the loss of your family business. You have called districts racist. As to your own heritage, you're a Hispanic woman, played it up during your campaign, to the extent you never mentioned your husband, William Wild Bill Elliott, who is not Hispanic or any minority, at least he claims, while claiming to understand the Hispanic community and how you will represent that community, but have stated, "I do not think like them." I take it you think like your husband? You have sat at your council seat and laughed when I complained about comments made by your husband and the response of, from a candidate about those comments about my dead wife. You have remained silent when your husband said of Jewish heritage, people of Jewish heritage wished they were white. You sat silent when your husband stated people of different ethnic backgrounds wished they were white. Your husband, without comment from you, has attacked fellow council members who have a different political view from you and your husband. Your husband has attended meetings on your behalf as your representative and enforcer, his words. So how do people who are not white, or anyone for that matter, come to you for assistance for problems when your husband has clearly stated his positions on issues related to political philosophy, economic status, color, ethnic background, and ancestry or immigration status, and you have remained silent? The members of this council and the next council, prior to making any rotation, must discuss the comments of the Mayor Pro Tem regarding not thinking like them and her obvious support of William Wild Bill Elliott's comments. Silence by the Mayor Pro Tem shows her agreement. Silence by other members of this council means they also agree. Please save the city embarrassment, pain, and expense of the steps that will be taken to address this situation. Resign.
We've, we've been lied to in the last years by the pharma-financed official media, and the stream of lies is beginning to slow down. Using the DuckDuckGo search engine, the other search engines are tracking devices and are as compromised as the official news media. You could go to Stu Peters Rumble. Eight days ago, a documentary came out. It's had 12 to 15 million views in eight days. It's helping people find out what's really going on, because, as I said, pharma finances our official media, and you just don't cross them officially. But then there's this documentary movie, Died Suddenly, and so, you know, 12 to 15 million people have heard an alternative story in the last week and a half. So this, this documentary and other events may trigger congressional hearings. We'll see about that. But the bioweapon, I mean, this was, this was invented by the Department of Defense. That scam has about run its course, and what we have is, it's beginning to look like, according to the coroner's, in Died Suddenly, a depopulation agenda. People aren't dying of the COVID. Usually epidemics, natural epidemics, run their course in a year and a half. It's been almost three years now, and the, you know, the propaganda, it's just on and But my hope is that the Pfizer-Maderna industrial complex is going to be sued into bankruptcy in a class action, a class action suit. Perhaps the states, the willing, the able and willing attorney generals are going to first investigate using grand juries and then take the evidence to federal, to federal court. But, you know, the clot shot has got to end, and people, people aren't dying of COVID, they're dying of the COVID treatment. That's issue one. With my last two minutes, you know, Mount SAC just had a local disaster. Well, a pilot taking off from Chicago O'Hare Airport didn't even make it to 5,000 feet before he collapsed and died. Fortunately, in the side, in the side seat was a, was an experienced captain, pilot trainer, and he turned the flight around and brought it back in, and nobody died. But if we keep on going this way, airline disaster is imminent. Flight crews and clot shots don't go together. Southwest Airlines disability claims have gone up 260%, and the airlines in general, pilot disability claims have gone up 300% in the last two years. You can verify this on Jane Ruby, November 28, 2022. But jab pilots are falling over, you know, died suddenly, healthy people on But jab pilots are falling over, you know, died suddenly, healthy people on takeoff. So one thing to do would be to complain to the FAA hotline on the flight standards at the district office or the health certificates management office, or complain to the Department of Transportation because our airports...
I have no further speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you. City manager, would you please respond to public comment concerns?
Good evening, Mayor Castellanos, members of the council, members of the public. I'll try to briefly respond to some of the comments that made. Matt, thank you for the thank you. Working hard on that facility and intend to get it up to standard for all of those fields. We've cycled in a period of field rest because we can't play on it year-round. I know you know this, but I appreciate your coming out and thank you for acknowledging the good work of our crews up there. Armando, you had asked about a number of things, including a lawsuit, Briley versus the city of West Covina. We don't have anything to report on that matter tonight, but I think we're close, and I might have a public announcement by the city attorney next month in January after the disposition of that case. Lupe, you had asked about parking issues and some cleanups on Centus. We're going to have a report tonight from our code enforcement manager. He's got a number of his staff here. I'm aware of the problems in that area, and we'll focus on that, starting tomorrow again. I know the need for some parking tickets and some posting of signs. That's a bigger issue we come into the council next calendar year. It's on the council's list of goals that you're going to consider at the January meeting. But we'll work on those issues. I'm aware of them, and I want to solve them. Elsie talked about a number of priorities, and I would encourage Elsie and everyone to come to the, participate in the budget process. We've begun that process for the next fiscal year with a budget survey that's now available online, and if you want the city to emphasize certain priorities over others, I think that would be your best path and best way to have a voice in that process. I didn't know I still owed you a copy of a contract, Ms. Messman, but I'll get it for you. I know you know how to make public records requests, and I didn't know that one was still dangling, but I apologize you don't have it tonight. TransTech contract should be easily provided to you, so I'll get it for you. Mr. Schumaker, Mr. Robinson, thank you both for being here expressing your opinions. I don't think there's anything that the manager needed to respond to, and I think that's all I've got, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, just on to follow up the situation of Santos and Valley and the same problem with Santos and Amanda. Okay, and this location on Santos is a major, okay, it's really problematic, and I think I will report to the city, report to our police chief, and our public work. The promise is they are going to make sure the area clean and safe, so I think we need to continue to make the thing happen. Say, rather than residents come over here complain, we already fired the case, okay, and the city already promised we'll take care of the area because that is really not presentable at all. I saw it in my eye, so I know it. So hopefully, the city can really, okay, put a foot down, okay, to make sure the improvement for those areas and to make sure that we talk about code enforcement, and hopefully they can be our eye and to find out the problem and fix it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
Sorry, I just had to share. I know to the speaker, who just sometimes comes up and just talks negatively about the city, and there's a lot of improvements that do occur. And in regards to street paving, potholes, I don't know, a few people have been seeing a lot of street pavings have been being fulfilled, making those streets beautiful. City has done a great job. In regards to any potholes, if you do report it, they will fix those. I have seen that happen. In regards to graffiti, we do have a graffiti program that our PD and code enforcement, they're doing an excellent job. They have been, unfortunately, graffiti has been an increase in all cities, but especially in our city of West Covina, they've been doing a fabulous job. They've actually even given rewards to those who have reported those people caught in action, so at least it prevents them from continuing that again. But I just wanted to bring that up in case others wanted to know, but thank you.
Thank you. Okay, more? Okay, no more responses. So now moving on to our city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have just a brief report before you get to your business on the agenda. First, as I mentioned in response to the public comments, we've begun the budget process for the next fiscal year. It seems like we've just finished the last one, but we're on our way again. And I would invite and welcome all residents who want to participate in that process with some of the goal setting and some of their comments, but what the city's priorities be, that is now up online on our city website, and it's a Survey Monkey instrument, but please, please look at that and in that way contribute to that process. There's a couple of items on your consent calendar tonight that I just wanted to make mention of that have been, I think, approaches that'll help the city solve some of its first maintenance issues. The first one is item 17, consideration of a contract for some $427,000 a year that will specifically tend to areas like this, which is an unbeautiful, the sidewalk, the suckers growing on the parkway trees, and the median maintenance. And that one is recommended for a contract with Bright View. The other maintenance contracts are out for RFP and are heading to council in the near future. The second one on your consent calendar tonight, I wanted to just highlight publicly, is item 13, which is our H-SIP grant. There was some $3.2 million for intersection improvements that the city was awarded a grant to solve. Cycle 10 will focus on 10 intersections citywide. The item on your agenda tonight is the first piece of that, which is the award of an engineering contract to do the plans and the specifications so we can get that out to bid and keep it moving. Next slide, I just wanted to mention some recently completed projects. You've got a number of notices of completion on your agenda tonight, which is the tail end of a CIP project. The Cortez Park Playground, the Residential Streets Rehabilitation Program with the RJ Noble Contract, the City Hall First Floor Restrooms are now open and functioning, the Cameron Ave and Baranca Street Signal Installation. There's a picture on this slide depicting the new standing seam metal roof and hardy board siding at the Cameron Park restroom. We think that's a template for what our park restrooms are going to look like going forward. Another example on the Friendship Park Project, we've got a beautiful new playground, but we want to continue the work with that project and put in that building behind the baseball field, a very similar roof and look on that one. The next slide is a picture from today's award ceremony. I mention this because it was kind of a moment for us as a city. We were nominated for and awarded a Best of Category Award for our Friendship Park Project. There were some 400 people at this luncheon today, and it was a moment for us. I know Mayor Pro Tem Diaz was there, as was Councilmember Tabat Tabai, to represent the city in the ceremonies, and I was really proud of our entire team to get that one to completion. It's a real bright spot. Next slide, I wanted to mention that the Discover West Covina is at the printers. It'll be hitting the mailboxes within a week or so. It's now available online. Better communication with the public is one of the council's goals, and I think this discover is a good example of ways that we can do that. I also wanted to, next slide, comment and compliment our Public Works crews for the really nice job they did with some Christmas decorations here at the Civic Center. I think it's a nice entry statement to the city and really was a point of pride for them. I think they really got into it, and the results showed, and I'd like to compliment them publicly for making that happen. Next slide is an event that just went past, one of our community events that's on our annual calendar now. I'd like to thank all the members of the public that took the time to come. I think they had a great time. We had some snow, we had some tubing, we lit the Christmas tree, we had a number of community groups, and I think our community services staff did a great job with that event. I was really, really proud of our team. We've got another community event coming up this Saturday, December 10th, the Old Town Center, South Glendora at Walnut Creek Parkway. There's going to be a Santa's Village, there's going to be a walking parade. People are welcome to come and bring strollers and bring wagons and participate in that. We think it'll be a great event, and we're partnering with the Kiwanis Club to make that one happen. And lastly, I just wanted to invite everyone to attend the reorganization meeting of our city council, which will be held at the next meeting, December 20th. That's our only business that night, with the exception of a consent calendar. Some of our routine business will be on your agenda, but public is welcome to come and share in that moment. That's all I've got this evening. Thank you very much.
You, David. Moving on to our consent calendar, we've got 17 items on consent today. Would anyone like to pull?
Mr. Mayor, I want to pull a number five, please.
Okay, Councilman Wu pulling five. Anyone else?
I'd like to pull number 17.
Pulling five and 17. Any others to pull? Councilman Tabat Tabai.
Number four.
Four, five, and 17. Any others? Okay, seeing none. I will make a motion to approve the items, with the exception of four, five, and 17.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Before I roll call, I have a few ordinances that I need to read into the record, Mayor. Item number five is a consideration of an ordinance amending Article 8 of Chapter 2 of the West Covina Municipal Code.
We could skip because we're going to pull it.
Oh, my apologies. You are correct. Thank you. Item number 12 is consideration of adoption ordinances, number 2507 and 2506, creating the mixed-use overlay zone. Ordinance number 2507, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving zone change, number 22-02, creating the mixed-use overlay zone. And ordinance number 2506, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, approving zone amendment, number 22-03, related to the mixed-use zone overlay standards. We also have item number 14, which contains an ordinance which amend Chapter 7 and 8 of the California Municipal Code. This is ordinance number 2508, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending Chapter 7 and 9 of the West Covina Municipal Code to adopt by reference the 2023 Los Angeles County Building Code Title 26, Electrical Code Title 27, Plumbing Code Title 28, Mechanical Code Title 29, Residential Code Title 30, Existing Building Code Title 33, which adopt by reference the 2022 California Building Code, Electrical Code, Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, Residential Code, and Existing Building Code with certain amendments, additions, and deletions thereto. I have a motion by Mayor Castellanos and a second by Councilmember Tabat Tabai, with the exception of item number four. And if I may read the titles of the items that were pulled as a request. Item number four is pulled, consideration of revisions to salaries and benefits schedule for its management team. Item number five was pulled by Councilman Wu, which is consideration of an ordinance amending Article 8 of Chapter 2 of the West Covina Municipal Code. And item number 17, which was pulled by Councilwoman Lopez-Viado, and that is consideration of an agreement for landscape maintenance of citywide medians, right-of-way, commercial zones, and sidewalks. Councilmember Tabat Tabai?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Castellanos?
Aye.
Item passes, with the exceptions of those that were pulled, 5-0.
The exception of four, five, and 17. Moving on to agenda item number four, Councilman Tabat Tabai, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had questions regarding the pay increase. So from my understanding, given some of our other recent agreements, that this pay increase may leave some of our department heads, like our police chief, actually not making the same salary as some below that. Is that true? Can you speak to that?
Through the chair, that is correct. This agenda item is a one-time 5% COLA for all of our city management team and a payment of the one-time $5,000 hero pay. That piece of that is consistent with the other groups. I'd also like to speak to what this is not. This is not a salary adjustment that gets us to market with respect to the director's salaries. If it's your intention to have me look at that, I'd be happy to do so. My sense is we're probably 15, 16, 17% behind market in these series, but I'm recommending that you adopt this tonight, which is just a one-time COLA to help us advance slightly for all of them.
Okay, so just, when we negotiated with the other groups, in the process of accounting, were we considering what impact this would also have on the department head's salaries?
Through the chair, we were not, although we are aware that we've now got an issue of some compaction, meaning to say, some of the people in certain series are making just extremely slightly more than the people reporting to them. So I think there's a need for us to study that. That's not what this represents tonight. We would need to bring that back at a future time.
Okay, so then, just to be clear, so then, when we were going through negotiations, we didn't consider the impact it would have on department heads in terms of the salary
Again, I believe we were aware that we would end up with some compaction in certain series, but we didn't address adjusting those at that time. We wanted to take care of the rank and file first, and we are now under multi-year contract with all nine of our labor unions. This group is not represented.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to move that we, can we approve the $5,000 and give direction to go back and look at the proper percentages so we can be at, I guess, at a proper salary scale for our department heads?
Through the chair, council's options are really myriad with respect to that. Certainly, you could do that if you chose. My recommendation would be that you do this and then return to council with that other analysis that you're requesting.
Councilwoman Lopez-Viado.
Actually, in reference to that, it was, I had an issue that, I have an issue if a subordinate is paid less than their bosses, and all the liability goes to the department head, the bosses. So that is my current concern, and I know at this time, we do have the subordinate paid more than the department head boss. So that was one of the issues. Now, the second issue, I know that you are giving up to 5% currently, right? Okay, since I'm not sure who gets what percentage, but I want to make sure that that is taken into consideration in regards to the department heads' pay with the adjustment with the new January 2023, that has that impact. But in reference to Councilman Tabat Tabai, in reference to that, I would like to see that impact of the study for the department heads and actually from top down as well, because I don't want to, I mean, we see it from above here, but I don't know how it looks from anywhere from below to the top. So yes.
Through the chair, I understand your direction with respect to that.
Councilman Wu.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. About the salary comparisons, there's always somebody could pay higher, somebody could pay lower, but we are trying to do the best to take care of our staff. And currently, all the rank and file has been adjusted, and nine union group, and including some of almost everybody have adjustment. So the only group to get adjustment is our director. So I think right now, the first step to give them the 5% and plus hero pay during this COVID three years, they stick with us and perform and improve our city, I think that is justified to give this. And later on, if you have any, okay, have our finance director to look into it, see can we do adjustment, can we afford it, and this and that, but at least give our director the similar same pay, same adjustment to some other group, so everybody get the equal treatment. So in that way, and I think we will have a happy family. So I kind of agree with the city manager having his decision to have that 5% and decide who get fired, who get this and that, and based on the salary range, okay, and in that way, I think it's fairness, and at the same time, taking our director. Okay, I think this is my suggestion. I think we should just go for what the suggestion from the city management team and to go for this, and later on, we can request the city finance director and HR to look into it, okay, but in the meantime, just give them pay, and, okay, in that way, we have almost taken care, almost everybody, right? We didn't miss anybody. And, okay, in that way, we have almost taken care, almost everybody, right? We didn't miss anybody. So in that way, everybody treat with fairness.
So just to some, you'd like to proceed with this as our city manager agreed to, and then we could bring up the rest of it later? Okay, understood. Thank you, Councilman Wu. Councilman Tabatay?
Thank you, Mayor. I think one of my big concerns is really with the entire process. When we went negotiations with the other groups, I mean, all of that study should have been done on where their salaries were going to end up. And as a management team and finance should have also understood what the impact was going to be on department heads. And then also put that, those numbers into effect, knowing that once we gave these raises, that we, of course, were going to have to also raise our department heads. Again, like Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado mentioned, you're having your department heads with all the liability now making less. You know, if we have a police chief making less than his captains, we also have to think, what are we doing with our organization, right? You know, how are we going to recruit the best people? How are we going to motivate people to want to advance if this is the process we're going to go about? What are we doing to the authority of the department heads when they're making less money? And so, you know, to come at this date without those numbers, without knowing what the pay increases should be for each department head, I mean, I don't think that's acceptable. I think those numbers should have already been figured out. And then, when you came to us here in December, then we should have been presented with that. The fact that we're being presented with a 5% just across the board, again, is not a good process, and I think we really need to do better. So now, the question on the hero pay, the $5,000, is that also necessary to do now? Is there a deadline for when that money has to be spent? Or is that something else that can come back? Because I don't think this is something that, you know, we send it back and then it's going to take another six months. This seems to be just kind of a, if we're thinking about proportionality, shouldn't take that long to figure out.
Through the chair. I think there are three main factors when the city sets compensation, or what's been going on with the CPI generally. We know what that is. We know it's this and more. What's the city's ability to pay in terms of the city finances? What can the city afford? And then, third, the piece that you've all been talking about tonight is what are the internal relationships and what's going on with the market in which we're competing for talent? I don't have that data for you tonight, but I could return with it. Given our workload, I could have that to you in the first quarter of the next calendar year. I can bring it back to you at your closed session. You could deliberate there, which would probably be the appropriate place for it.
Thank you. Councilman Tabatay?
So do we know how much time some of our department heads will be earning less than their subordinates? Do we have a timetable?
Through the chair, I think with this, everybody would be just slightly above the people working for them and some more. But I don't have the overall, the cord of the internal relationships for you tonight. But if you do this this evening, we'll be just slightly ahead of the boss-employee relationship.
Okay, so if we don't do the 5%, then this is where you're saying we would get it?
It would be an inverse relationship.
The inverse relationship.
This would just move the salary ranges, place it within the ranges based on performance at the discretion of the city manager. But I think it's justified to move the ranges.
And for clarity, I think it's not 5% across the board. It gives you the discretion based on performance.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Move the motion to approve?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Costellanos for item number four. Councilmember, I'm sorry. Oh, Councilmember Tabatay?
No.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz? Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Item passes 4-1.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five. Councilman Wu?
And I think this is what I request last time. Okay, we got in the campaign contribution, okay? And I think before my time, in 2014, 15, previous city council approved, okay, any contribution should be $500 restriction limit. And due to previously, they have no limit or something. And some people, some business, okay, will contribute to one candidate for $25,000 or $10,000. So become kind of unfair for a lot of people grassroots, try to get a donation. So that's why previously, before my time, they approved the $500. So it been continued till this election, then we find out, okay, then some PAC can using unlimited resource, okay, and using the PAC, a political action committee, and can using unlimited resource, don't even have to tell us where the money coming from, and to attack candidate or to support candidate. That would be no different than a corporation, a big business, and trying to donate to some campaign. This is almost the same thing. So that's why I request, okay, to have the city attorney to look into it. But over here, I read it basically talking about PAC donation 650, okay, to the candidate. And no, we request, I want amended, the PAC should receive equal treatment like a candidate. Okay, that where this donation coming from should be FPPC recorded. Okay, I request, because in 2014, 15, it's $500, but the inflation, so I request to increase to $650. This is following the Bowen Park. Bowen Park just have a bill passed overwhelming 76% of resident approved restricted donation to candidate and PAC the donation to 750. I think 750 maybe a little bit too much. I think 650, from $500 to 650. Each person, okay, can donate or company. And any developer or any work for the city business cannot donate the money to the campaign due to the potentially conflict of interest. So I think this should be set up the fairness for future candidate. They can have a fair game rather than, okay, they cannot bid with a superpower. So this is my request. I want to request amended with the PAC donation restricted 650. And they have to record it FPPC where this money coming from. And exactly same guideline like candidate.
Mr. Mayor, that's a simple amendment we can make. We brought back, we raised it from the 500 to the 650. I think it was at $615 because of CPI. We'll continue to have CPI at the 650. But we will now, and I believe we'll continue to have CPI at the 650 for PACs to accept money. It's a simple amendment. We'll put that in, have it for second reading for you in the second meeting in January. Any questions?
I have a question. Thank you, Mayor. So Councilman Wu, I know, especially with the last election, we have seen, you know, special interests or PAC spending hundreds, thousands of dollars on going against a candidate or going for a candidate, which is, makes it unfair for candidates who only could get a maximum of 650 per person or organization to, you know, fight back in that. So currently with this ordinance, is there a rule on any special interests or PAC having a limit on spending on a candidate?
Mr. Mayor, there is not, and we cannot put a limit on that. Our ordinance already addresses independent expenditures. Over $1,000, they have to file a form with the elections official. $100 form with the elections official. But we cannot, we cannot limit independent expenditures. The Citizens United Supreme Court case already has come down and said that's a violation of the First Amendment if we try and restrict that. But we can limit contributions to PACs because that is not considered First Amendment. So we cannot, we cannot limit independent expenditures.
Is there any differentiation between a PAC and a super PAC?
We've defined, we brought it back, we can strengthen the definition of the committee. They're not identified PACs or super PACs, but we'll strengthen definition committee if we need to. There is clear differences between PACs and super PACs. Super PAC can take campaign or can take contributions from a company treasurer, association treasurer. PACs cannot. PACs cannot provide that from a treasurer. They can get their members or employees to donate individually. There's more restrictions placed on PACs, you would call them a committee, as opposed to super PACs. And super PACs can spend as much money, I think we all knows, as they want on independent expenditures.
Right, and because of Citizens United, we have no ability to cap that. So if they wanted to come and dump a million dollars on the campaign, they could do that.
That's correct. And this is kind of trending in cities. You don't see it so much with districts. It's kind of trending with big PAC money coming in, and more and more cities are adopting these types of ordinances now. So that's the intent of this. There's always the appearance of corruption and transparency, and that's what we're doing. And I think more and more cities will continue to do this. But it's a simple amendment. I can bring it back for you for council consideration, second meeting in January.
Do you have any more questions?
No, okay, I'm going to move the motion to approve with the treat the PAC exactly like candidate with restriction of 650 for the contribution. That is my motion.
And I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilman Wu and a second by Mayor Protem Diaz to make a minor adjustment to make the contribution limit to PACs the same as it is to individuals.
So they have disclosed to where the money coming from, exactly like candidate with their FPPC and all the report.
Yes. Before I take roll call, I'm going to read the title of the ordinance into the record. This is item number five, a consideration of an ordinance amending Article 8 of Chapter 2 of the West Covina Municipal Code. Ordinance number 2510, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Covina, California, amending Article 8 of Chapter 2 of the West Covina Municipal Code relating to campaign finance regulations. Councilmember Tabatay?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Item passes 5-0.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number 17, Councilwoman Lopez Viado. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. This was one of my issues prior. I was actually surprised that Mariposa Landscape end up bidding again when they failed to do their job, first of all. And second of all, that their bid came out way higher than the rest of the bids. So that one was a little bit surprising to me. But my question is, with this bright view landscape, will they have a system in place of how they're going to handle the areas to be cleaned? Or are they here today? They are? By all means, please come up.
Could you finish your question, please?
Yeah, I just, well, first, are you already aware of the issues that we've had with our prior contractor?
I don't think to the extent that you are.
Okay, and my next question is, will you have a system in place on how you're going to handle the areas that needs to be cleaned? I mean, obviously, we have a lot of issues throughout the whole city. And I know I've seen through here the total price per year. But we've had this happen before, and then they didn't do their part in cleaning those areas. And, you know, when I requested to pull the contract, because I've noticed that our maintenance was doing the work, and in that contract, they had the tree wells of the weeds. And so I just want to make sure that you have a system in place to make sure our city is cleaned up. And how do you have that system in place?
Right, well, we do have a number of systems for that. First is going to be our labor plan. And so we've got five dedicated employees and an account manager. Account manager will be the liaison and the point of contact with all of the city staff to communicate to them, if something comes up, hey, we've got a street here that needs specifically for you to get today, something happened. We can address that immediately. And second, we commit to a rotation map. So we'll be able to be tracked, if you will, by the city at any given day. So on every single day of the week, they're going to know where our staff is. They're welcome, as the city inspectors, to drive up and say, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, you're all there, perfect, they're doing a job. They're welcome to watch us if they like. Some cities do that. But we commit to being in a certain location every single day. And accountability map that we share with you guys in the first month, and that you as the council, any of the staff can absolutely keep us accountable and hold us to that as well.
That rotation map, is that, will that be shared to the residents so that they know, hey, this area is going to get cleaned?
It's not a secret. It can be shared with anybody and everybody, absolutely.
Okay.
And then lastly, to answer your question, we have a system of reporting. We believe in what's called a QSA or Quality Site Reporting Process, in which we are giving to you guys constant feedback of before and after pictures. So I noticed you had up, there was a picture of just the tree wells with the suckers just growing up. It was shared moments ago. We would take that same picture. And then we would show you hours later how that picture is drastically different, and everything's been taken care of. And so in our QSA, it's going to have not just pictures for before and afters, but it'll also have items that we, that come up that we need to address, let you know about irrigation breaks and how we're handling them. So it's not just, we like to offer the solution when we give you the problem as well. And then you hold, and then we give you a timeframe. So there was a valve that's leaking here, just so you know we're on top of it. The crew will be out there tomorrow to fix it. We'll send you a picture of that when it's completed. And so we communicate in that way, with pictures, texts. All of that's just public to you guys and made readily available.
Actually, your answers are much better than previous contract vendor when we've explained certain things. Quick question, what cities are you currently taking care of right now or locations?
Sure, closest to here, we've got the city of Anshukamunga, the city of Norco. We've got, our references are on our list there, but the city of Upland is going to be close by. We do the city of, the list is, it's a big list.
Mostly, I don't know if you could hear me. Mostly Inland Empire, right? And then also another branch that we have in, what is it, close to City Hope, right? They do a little bit of Duarte, and we have stuff going towards the west, city of Santa Clarita, all these kinds of riverside. Lots of cities, lots of references, you guys can see in the proposal, and if you don't have it, I'm sure somebody could provide it to you.
And what's the turnaround? How long does it take once we put in or a resident put in, you know, a complaint or an issue of a certain area?
Sure, well, that would depend on the complaint. We get, when you say complaints, we get some crazy things. During the windstorms, there could be 400-year oak tree that falls down crossing lanes. I mean, we're going to get on that immediately. We're going to get crews out there overnight. If something's safety issued, a safety problem, we're going to handle that immediately. So we have a 24-hour on-call. It's not just a voicemail box. It's a call center, so people are going to take your call. We're going to commit to responding to that call within an hour. And so we know that we have people out there. If it's something like somebody drives through a park and there's a geyser shooting to the sky, we commit to turning that off immediately. We'll get there that night. One of our crew will go turn it off. But we won't fix the problem at 2:00 AM, but we'll go and handle it, turn the water off, and let you know, hey, this is going to take certain parts. We'll have it fixed probably by 5:00 PM the next day. So again, depending issue to issue, but most likely, things are within the 24 to 48-hour period because it's not like we have to, we're in the city. These crew members are committed to being there five days a week, every single day. And so if there's something that happens, we're committed to taking care of it. And as we take care of these issues, we find that they come up a lot less frequently. So if you just commit to keeping the suckers out of tree wells and commit to keeping the weeds out of the turf.
Maintenance portion of it.
Maintenance, as you maintain things, the issues pop up way less frequently.
Okay, and this is probably a city staff question. Once approved, when do they start? Through the chair, if I may. January 1st. Okay, and you already currently have your rotation map in place, ready to go, first day?
We do not. We committed to having that to them within the first 45 days.
Okay, well, we have December. We expect a portion. I know, I know, I know, but I just wanted to.
I believe we're putting out fires first.
Okay.
And that map will be completed.
Well, at least prior to the rotational map, the cities that are in dire need of maintenance and needs, you know, yeah, we could get, you can get on that prior to the whole rotational map. Okay. That was all my questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I noticed you, let's see, you're going to take care of our citywide maintenance medians, I mean, right-of-ways, commercial zones, sidewalks, tree wells, and other areas. What would be the other areas?
Front yard if you need it.
Oh, that sounds perfect. You heard it.
Perfect.
Through the chair, if I may, some of the other areas would include like Restaurant Row, the Glendora Avenue businesses, the city yard wash areas. So those are some of the additional other areas. So those are some of the additional other areas that are specified in the scope of work. One of the things that you will notice that the scope of work is extensive, and it's very detailed, even to the point of the pruning needs, pesticide application, et cetera. So it's a very detailed scope. And I'm going to put words in your mouth, Brightview. I think we, you had to jump through some hoops to answer some of these questions.
Good. You know, I'm really excited about this, because this is like a pet peeve of mine. I really want our medians to be cleaned and weeded. We have so many weeds there, and the suckers are there. I mean, we just, we really need this work. And I'm really excited to make sure that it works out. And it sounds wonderful if we have five men, five days a week. I think it sounds great. So I'm hoping that we move forward with this. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wu?
Yep. Beginning, I don't know who you are, and you sit over there. I think I'm two banker coming to the city council. I don't know, you work for landscaping, so. And this is the best dress landscaper I ever seen. So just based on your dress, I think you should make a beautiful city for us. Yeah, because you keep yourselves nice and clean and well-dressed. So hopefully, make our city nice and clean and beautiful and presentable. And I only have a quick question. Do we have a, I think you can tell, we put a high hope in you guys, but just a quick question. Do we have a termination cloud in case if they don't perform? Well, I know we gave them three years' contract, but how about termination cloud? 15-day, right?
30 days, with or without cost.
30-day without cost. Now, we want five people, just, we don't, just for fun. But if you're doing a good job, we will keep you guys forever, okay? We just need somebody accountable and presentable and make sure our city beautiful. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. One more question?
Yeah. As soon as the, well, it's probably the city manager. Once the rotational map is completed and it's said approved and everything, I would like to request that it is posted. Is the rotational map like a GIS type of system where it has? Or is it, how is that put?
No, it would be a document.
Okay. Okay. I just want to make sure it's out for the residents to know that their areas are going to be taken care of, that they know when to expect it. And then Monday, is it Monday to Friday only, the five days or weekends?
Yes.
Okay. Well, and that being said, I would like to move the motion to approve this.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call please.
Regarding item number 17, consideration of agreement for landscape maintenance of citywide medians, I have a motion by Councilwoman Lopez Viado and a second by Mayor Protem Diaz. Councilmember Tabasby?
Aye.
Councilwoman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Item passes 50.
Thank you. Now make us proud.
So 45 days start today, right? I'm just saying, I want to see that. Thank you.
Thank you all. Moving on to public hearings, we've got item number 18, which is where we have to conduct a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, TEFRA, hearing and consider adoption of a resolution conditionally approving the issuance of not to exceed $20 million of California Enterprise Development Authority revenue bonds for the benefit of Options for Learning. So we'll conduct this hearing as required by Section 147F of the IRS Code of 1986 to receive comments relating to the issuance of the California Enterprise Development Authority of not to exceed $20 million of the authority's revenue bonds for the benefit of Options for Learning, a California nonprofit. Will city clerk verify the proper legal notice has been given?
Legal notice was given, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I shall open the public hearing on the project. Will we have a presentation first? Yes. And who will present the staff report?
Our Assistant City Manager, Paulina Morales, will handle this item.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. The item before you tonight is, or the public hearing before you tonight is a TEFRA hearing. It is a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing. And what that is, it's a process that allows for nonprofits to acquire tax-exempt bonds, which reduces the cost of the debt and servicing the debt for the borrower. The city's role is just to hold the public hearing to allow for public comment and approve a resolution stating to that effect. The project is from Options for Learning. They're looking to acquire the property of Garvey and convert it to their headquarters for their organization. Because they are a nonprofit, a portion of the property tax rule would be removed, and that would go towards helping them pay for the cost of locating in West Covina. They're currently located in Covina, and they would be moving their headquarters to West Covina. They also have a facility in West Covina on Azusa Avenue. Currently, the revenues to the city with, as I said, as of today, the city currently gets around $17,100. With the proposed increase in property value with the purchase of the property, we would potentially get up to $30,000, or $30,500. The applicant is here, if council has any questions.
Any questions? Nope, no questions. You can proceed. All right. So then we'll open up discussion. Do we, or do we have any, any members of the public who would like to comment on this in favor?
I have two speaker cards in favor of Mayor. Our first speaker is Dominic, um, excuse me, yes, Paul Pulver, followed by Dominic Apuche.
Good evening, Council. My name is Paul Pulver. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Options for Learning, a nonprofit organization who has served the greater San Gabriel Valley for over 40 years. Our goal is to unlock the promise of every child by providing high-quality preschool programs and schooling programs that prepare the children for a lifetime of success. Our programs primarily serve children from low-income families and are free for many families, while others pay a small copay based on household income. In West Covina, we operate 29 classrooms, serving over 600 residents each year. We have enjoyed great partnerships with a variety of school districts and cities across the San Gabriel Valley, and we look forward to a continued mutually beneficial relationship with the city of West Covina into the future. The building we are purchasing in the city of West Covina, which is the subject of this hearing, will become the new home for our 300 office employees who are currently spread across six offices located in Altadena, South Elmani, Alhambra, Baldwin Park, the City of Industry, and Covina. We request Resolution Number 2022126 be amended to strike the pilot contingency language and then be approved by the council. The pilot contingency language requested by city staff is unwarranted and appears discriminatory against options for learning since it has not been required by the city for other nonprofits. The state has prohibited pilot agreements for nonprofits that finance low-income housing projects. And while that's different, since our mission serves low-income children and families, we're not sure that a pilot agreement in this situation would be legal in California. Our bond counsel, who has worked for over 30 years with cities to obtain similar public approvals, has never heard of such a contingency being placed on a nonprofit in exchange for providing the public approval. Furthermore, such a contingency will create legal issues and will most likely not be accepted by our lender. Like all other 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations, Options for Learning is exempt from property and income taxes. This allows more money to be directed to making an impact in the lives of those we serve. If this resolution is approved with the contingency language intact, we will be forced to pursue alternate financing sources, which we do have, that will not require approval from the city council, but will allow us to retain our property tax exemption. In the end, the result will be the same for the city as if the contingency is removed. We estimate that 40% of the building will not be used for exempt purposes, so the city will not lose that portion of property taxes. Additionally, because the assessed value will increase after the sale and additional improvements to the building, the net loss of property tax to the city will be minor. Finally, the number of people working in the building will increase by nearly 200 over its current count. These employees will eat, shop, and support local businesses, so the increased sales tax revenue would likely contribute to increased revenue for the city and would increase sales for local businesses. We intend to continue having a positive impact on the children and families who are residents of West Covina and those in the broader San Gabriel Valley. We want to be a valued partner with the city and support local businesses. Again, we hope you will approve this resolution without the contingency language. Thank you.
Dominic Apuche?
I just wanted to echo Paul Pulver's message regarding the additional contingency placed on Options for Learning and the ability for us to move forward in a timely manner. Although we have alternate funding that we can do, it's going to be the same bond financing, just through a different organization. We will still be proceeding with that. But we do want to work with the city council to make this go through, to smooth things out, and to start our process, our new home within the city of West Covina. The additional tax revenue, even just for me as one individual, since I've been looking at this building and visiting this building on, you know, on a weekly basis, I've been shopping there, eating there, and I joined a gym at the West Covina Mall just because I know this is going to happen for us. We have many staff coming in. And from the presentation, there is a projection revenue of $30,000, I think it was $200. If we look at that at a 40% rate, the city would still be getting about $12,000. It's a marginal difference of $5,000 of what you're getting today. But we hope that all the presence that we bring to the community will make up for that. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson, did you want to speak? You marked that you were neutral, but did you want to speak? So I have one who is neutral, Mayor. Mr. Robinson?
It sounds like the IRS is involved. And I certainly recommend you keep the IRS happy. The only, the only question I have is the mission statement. They didn't, I was, I'm just curious about the mission statement and knowing a little bit more about the details of the services they're going to provide.
And then, Mayor, I have a speaker card, neither in favor, opposed, or neutral, and that's Mr. Herman.
This is not a slam dunk, but likely it's going to pass with unanimous votes. Because the bottom line is, it sounds like charter schools. Didn't we get enough of charter schools? By our local news reporting that those officials were just padding their wallets and ripping the public off while our childrens were getting spoiled, doing nothing, not learning anything, and not receiving the type of fair, equal, equitable education that they should retain? What do you think about that, Wu? Is that the barrier? Is that the barrier? A language is any barrier. But we're in the United States of America, Mr. Wu. And if you can't catch up with English, then yes, you will fall behind. So what are you doing to provide adequate bilingual languages in this course that they're offering? Are you going to give them an incentive that if they hire so many non-English-speaking persons to work in their staff, would that be the mission changer to what we don't hear and foresee in the future to come? Because I worked in education 22 years. And I do a fucking good job of understanding bullshit. So don't take me wrong on my opinion. But again, this is a $20 million investment. And the taxpayers believe that their revenue bonds is going to give them what we are paying for. Well, I've seen that in LA. I've seen that in other cities, and I hate to say it. It doesn't cut the mustard. I've seen multiple stories and incidents where those who are in charge of this bullshit benefit overall of the children. And is there any incorporation of children or families with children with ADA concerns? How are you going to address the ADA population? Are they invited to this program? That's what we need to know. Are the children invited and their families? Are they able to choose the proper class, the proper exercise, the proper education under the IEP that will develop with this learning and this curve? Because there's no mention of that. There's no mention of that. You know? And none of you have children with disabilities. None of you have family members with disabilities. And I hope I'm wrong in saying that. But you don't fucking know. You don't know the fucking difference from an invisible disability to a person who has a cognitive, intelligent disability and says it straight to your face, fuck you! But I know. Been there. Challenged it. Taught outside the box. Made shit happen without the help and support of the asshole administrators or the people involved in this intent to educate a population of people. I don't see any age group. I don't see what kinder is going from. Is it from pre-K to high school? Is it from pre-K to junior? Is it what? I don't know. So I have to be offensive to get my point to the public that you're paying for what you don't know because you're too fucking stupid to follow through with the revenue bonds and how they're going to interact with this appropriate development process under tax equity. And big deal. So we bring people here to spend their fucking money, go to the hotels with the bitches from the classrooms, fuck them, leave them, and go back to work. That's equity? No. It's not. So whether you buy your food, spend your money, here or not, inflation is kicking us all upside our ass. So I really hope your solution to this problem is to follow through and see that there is no discrimination or non-discriminatory issues here because they're not implemented in this item. So for you, figure it out for the public, since you believe you have all the goddamn ideas.
No further speaker cards, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have any questions? Oh, no further questions. So we'll close the hearing with that useless word salad. And comments, questions?
I just have a quick question. I actually know the Options for Learning, they actually, I do have one near my home at one of the schools. And I've also worked with them at work as well. So I know that they're a longstanding organization that's been here for many years. Primarily, the one that family members have views is the preschool, and that's the one that we work with. I know you have reasonable accommodation as well. I do work with disabled children, and I do have family members who are disabled. But anyways, I, in respect to the organization itself, the organization, Options for Learning, is a good organization on that aspect. Just wanted to bring that out. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. I did a research regarding the tax dollars, okay? And how much they sell for, $20, $22 million?
Correct. So, purchase price is $22 million.
The issue I have over here is, city have to explain to us why is the benefit for them to come in to have a headquarter? for them to come in to have a headquarters, to have two, three hundred employees come to our city, but we will lose the 1.25% of public tax. That will be 14%, 13.9% to the city and 42.8% to the school, the public school. Okay, and the Covina Unified School, and then plus about 5.3% go to the school district, okay, and the funding. So we're talking about school almost like 48%, 49% public tax. And why is the trade-out? So we will lose all this big portion of income to help the public school annually, and plus the 0.25% for the street sewer, okay, sanitation, street light, is about another $50,000. So basically, like a church, we waive them, no public tax. But when they come in, take this commercial building, what's the city gain? Besides, they come over here spending money, I don't even know what's their income, how much they can spend, but how much the benefit to our community? Because I feel bad if we approve this, besides the city lost the revenue, the school will lost hundreds of thousands annually, and Covina Unified School right now in distress. So should we approve this? But you really have to bring us the point come, the benefit we're doing this, what the benefit the city will get. Yes, they are reputable school, but their headquarters can be all the places why they have to come to here. This building for sale, some other developer will come to purchase, maybe pay even higher, and we can get a regular public tax to the school and to the city, and we don't even have to worry about all this so-called nonprofit. Nothing against a nonprofit. I think nonprofit is a great thing, but we don't have too many $20 million property around. We want to make sure, we don't want to show change our public school. So we want to make sure, okay, oh, I don't care county, you don't have to pay county, but pay school, okay? We need to pay school, public school, and the city, city need money to pay. Did you see, okay, employee, they need raise, so we need money. So the city have to tell us what kind of benefit if we do this.
Can I also add a question? I know Options has a lot of offices currently distributed throughout the whole San Gabriel Valley and probably further. One, how many offices do you have? And what, two, is where is your current headquarters office?
Let's have you come to the mic to answer that, please.
Because I know there's lots of Options offices, and I don't see like a need of having, what's the purpose of having a headquarters? And yeah.
Yeah, I listed the cities that all of our offices are currently in. Our corporate headquarters is in Covina, but we have six other total offices in the San Gabriel Valley. All of them eventually will be brought to this building so that we can work together much better as an organization and serve the community.
So if you have this, all those other locations that you mentioned will be shut down and will be all here?
Offices, yes. Those other offices currently are leases, yeah.
Please come to the...
Any please come to the mic so the residents can hear you.
I would clarify that it's the administrative offices, not the actual preschool operations.
No, no, I know that there's preschool operations. I understand that, but I also am aware that there are also administrative offices throughout the areas. So that's why I wanted to, yeah, I wanted clarification on this. And yeah, that was my question, and on top of what Councilman Wu would like to bring and how it benefits the city as well.
Well, again, I think we're an organization that continues to serve young children and school-aged children, which is a vital support, I think, to your community as well as the broader community. If you looked at it just financially, yes, we're bringing additional employees that will generate...
Sir?
Yes, sir.
I have no problem with your organization. I'm just talking about your administrator or this employee come to our city. I'm asking my city staff, they bring this to us, they should tell us what's benefit to the city. It's a fair question.
Yeah.
We have to give up so much money for public tax that vital to our survival, plus the public, okay, their system. So we give up this, what's the trade-out? Meaning, you provide more service for us, more of our low-income people can use your distinct service, but it's not. This is a headquarters for all the employee administration to operate your daily business. So it's not providing the service. So office is not providing a service, office providing the commercial building office. So my point is, what kind of benefit to our city, our resident? That's the question I ask. Paulina, you want to answer the question?
Sure. So one of the benefits would be that right now, because of the COVID pandemic, a lot of office buildings are having issues with leasing them. They are looking to occupy, I believe, the entire space, whether it's a large portion Options for Learning with a smaller portion for leasing it to other entities, including other nonprofits and other for-profit organizations. There will be an economic benefit to having a fully leased office building in the community. I believe right now their occupancy rate, I'm not sure what their occupancy rate is, but it's not fully leased.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Paulina, I disagree with you. We have a big building, the Barranca Tower, since 1984, they built until they sold a couple years ago for closures, it was always 50%, okay, an occupancy. They even lost the Wells Fargo, and then the new owner came in, they purchased from the foreclosure. Within one year, they leased out 80%, two years, they leased out 100%. And now they have international jellybee taking care, took two floor on the top. And now people have to wait in the line to get in. It's a management issue. It's a management issue, okay? It's not. The market's right there. How can Barranca Tower right now fully leased compared with 20, 30 years, always vacant for 50%? Same thing for this building I saw, they fixed up so pretty, but they need to find a way. And I know a lot of company to, okay, finding some headquarters, this and that, just like them, they're finding, okay, this beautiful freeway, okay, freeway front, visibility. I think that's why they want, because visibility, they put their huge logo, okay, and maybe even put a billboard sign, okay, promote their company. So that's why they want this building. But the problem is, what benefit to the city? Okay, if we can compensate the loss of revenue and the school, the school has 48%. So there's a lot of money to our Covina Unified School. I think it's Covina Unified, right?
Covina Valley, that's correct.
Okay, so I'm sorry, okay, this is just a concern I have. I know you are a great entity, a great organization, I have to see the pocket of the city.
Yeah, and I would remind you, well, first of all, the building was up for sale for quite a while and did not sell. So we are the best and highest bid in terms of the purchase. And number two, yes, the council and the city has every right to deny this motion, but that unfortunately will not change the circumstances for the city or the Covina Valley School District. We, as a nonprofit by the IRS, we are exempt from property tax. We will be able to continue to purchase this building and use other financing methods than this particular one. Yes, it will set us back a little bit in terms of time, and it will cost us a little bit more money. But so it really is the city's choice. We appreciate being on the agenda and the city staff helping us to be here tonight. But yes, it is the council's prerogative.
Thank you.
Councilman Tchubatwa.
Thank you, Mayor. So then, I guess from the staff's perspective, if we take it for their word that this is going to go through anyways, that they're going to purchase this building, our rationale for adding the pilot agreement, is it precedent? Is it, we want to make sure that going forward, if nonprofits come in with monies to purchase buildings, that they understand this is the process? I'm just trying to get staff's perspective.
Excuse me, through the chair. I would say we welcome this nonprofit. We've gotten to know them a little bit through this process. We know them by reputation to be a very solid group, not the question here tonight. With that welcome, we'd also like to find a way that we could include them in our community in such a way that it doesn't cause fiscal detriment to the government agencies who serve them. This year, our fire department is going to run 10,000 calls. Somebody calls 911, we show up, our guys save their lives. That comes at a cost. And so I don't want to lose money in the general fund, which is how we got to the idea that they could voluntarily agree to a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes. That's our recommendation, that you approve the resolutions, including the authorization, the direction that the city manager negotiate and execute a payment in lieu of taxes agreement to secure that fiscal footing that we think is necessary. I'm mostly concerned about my city because I'm the city manager. I know school district funding is complicated. There's provision under state law for school districts to receive more in average daily attendance funding if they lose local taxing effort or gain it. But with regard to the city, I think a pilot, could we come to terms about it, would benefit both parties, and that's the thinking behind the recommendation tonight.
Councilman Tchubatwa.
Are these common with these types of deals with the nonprofits? Is this something that we would see in other cities?
Through the chair, I would say in California, perhaps not as common. With certain kinds of nonprofits, they're specifically precluded from signing these kinds of agreements. I think it's the kind of situation where the parties could agree. It's a custom kind of financing. They've got other options for financing that might be in their better interest, but I believe the structure as presented would be legal. I'll defer to the city attorney about that, but I think it's something you could do if the parties were to agree about it.
I think just because, one of my concerns, and I know we're, you know, public service as council members and the city, we serve the community, but we've also tried to create partnerships with nonprofits as well, and we see their role in serving the community. So I guess my concern is, are, you know, are we creating, you know, with this pilot agreement, I guess this sense that West Covina is not necessarily welcoming to nonprofit organizations, that we do need to kind of fill certain areas where the city cannot fill. And so, you know, I think sometimes you ask yourself, well, what's the cost benefit? I think Councilman Wu was asking that question, you know, but what is also the cost of this perception you're giving, you know, that we have an organization here, a longtime organization that is bringing professional people to the city. It's one of the things we have also tried to do, is we've tried to bring in businesses that will bring in professional people that would possibly look to eventually purchase into West Covina as well, become residents of the area. So I just, I'm wondering the benefit that you're saying the city is going to receive versus the cost, which it is going to be a cost, not only their time, but also the message we are sending out. And so I guess that is a major concern of mine, that we're going in this way. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Hold a question.
Go ahead.
So, quick question. So basically, you in escrow already?
We are in escrow.
So basically, you're ready to close?
Yes.
So no matter how city do anything, you're going to close the escrow? You're going to purchase? Okay, so right now, our city managers create something that we can work together. And then, but you look at the beginning, you always say you disagree with his method.
Well, for this particular financing, our council has said having that contingency on there as a requirement, because that's what a contingency is, be problematic, and that we would most likely have to shift to a different financing mechanism.
And did he say why that would be problematic?
No, he just said it would raise legal issues and complications that probably wouldn't be worth battling in that sense.
That's really the advice he gave you? I mean, I just disagree. I can't really think of, I mean, and if he gave you that kind of advice to not give you the bullet point to speak on it, I call nonsense.
I deal with the council on the bond financing. So if we move forward with a contingency, this is going to delay our financing. Our financing contingency, we have to remove it on December 12th. So we will have to figure this out before December 12th, because if this does not go through, we can't move forward with the finalization of the bond financing with this particular bond financer. So if we can't move forward with them and we remove our...
No, I get that. I get how contingencies work. I get all that, but the legal aspect of a legal barrier is, I mean, in terms of like this overall deal, it's a negligible amount that this pilot's requesting annually. I just can't see a bank or any kind of financiers say, oh, no, not it. And I can't think of any kind of real legit legal hurdle that would actually trigger that. So I just want to understand that legal hurdle that exists.
Yeah, if this doesn't pass, the cost difference to go with a different bond financing is going to be about $20,000.
So this is much better.
We've offered to pay the $20,000 to the city for that. So that is our cost difference between the two different type of tax bond financing. So as the council, you know, we have to safeguard our funds as well, as good stewards of our funds, that this transition will cost us money, but we're willing to pay that transition. That will be an I-bond financing that I think the hearings are held in Sacramento, and those will be held at the end of December, early January. So that is the recommendation. If we can't get this one done, we do have that lined up financing. It is the same bond financing, it's the same rates.
So it's not about a legal challenge, it's more about cost of the loans, cost of the financing?
The legal thing comes in with a contingency we can't move forward. We'd have to make sure that contingency is met. The way it's written right now is that it's contingent upon working out a pilot deal with the city, with the city manager. So if we don't get that, that's where the legality...
Okay, that makes more sense. That's a choice. But anyway, that answers my question. It's a financing cost difference, more so the lack of action will cause the legal challenge. Okay, Councilman Wu.
I have a very basic question. Okay, since you already purchased, you guys signed a purchase agreement, you have an escrow open, you're ready to close escrow, and you go to financing looking for bond. Now certainly, city manager wants us to decide a pilot program. So since you already said, you don't really need our approval, you can just purchase with your bond, okay, financing, and you're done. We cannot say it's a private sale, they can sell to anybody, right? Right? So we, as a city, we have no say, okay? And the only time we have a say is when you want to come, us approve, approval, then we will see, hey, is that benefit to the city or not? Other than that, you guys can just go forward, close escrow, because a private sale, okay, has nothing to do with the government and with the city right to interrupt, okay, interference. But the point is, so what this is about? I'm kind of confused over here. And they're already in escrow, they're ready to close escrow, they want to close escrow, and now it's not like we can stop their purchase. Okay, they already purchased, and right now it's just a cost, it's the issue. So you want us to do something, maybe can reduce your costs. Is that what we here for?
What do we reduce our...
But what are we here for? They're already in escrow, why we talk about the private sale?
The statement is the same, this would reduce your financing cost if it proceeds without the pilot as opposed to your next best option.
It would reduce the cost and time by about 20,000. This hearing is required by the current bond financer that we're using. This hearing is required by the current bond financer that we're using. If we had to switch, this kind of hearing by the city is not required. So that's why we're.
Oh, got it, see? That's why I'm so confused.
For the lowest cost.
I would think about we approve your purchase, then I would say, I'm sorry, no. That's why I prepared all this, then it's not about, you already, it's already, you got luck already.
That's required by the financier.
So this basically is the requirement on your bond financing, and then we here to help you to reduce your costs. Okay, and let's try the procedure, otherwise they have to go to another lender, another bond.
Higher rate, it doesn't require this hearing.
Yeah.
It would be the same rate, same bond financing, different issuer that holds its hearing.
So since we have to help you to save money, so how much you could pay us?
That's the 20,000, that would be the cost difference.
And that's one time only.
Between here and there, yes.
It's so little.
Which is about three years' worth of taxes.
But since you already purchased, I want to welcome you guys, since, okay, I cannot stop you that coming in.
We want to be.
Oh, I put my wrong foot, okay? Forgive me, okay? Since you already, you should tell me, say, no matter you approve or not, we already in, shut up. Oh, my goodness, I waste my time talking about this and that. Okay, I'm so, now, at least I understand.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the staff report, by the way. So, okay, so then, just so everyone is clear, so if we were to pass this with the pilot agreement, then you would actually just go to the different bond? It would cost you an extra $20,000, but you would still purchase it and we would still not get the property tax? So then I guess my question for the city manager, if that is the reality, then why are we talking about this pilot agreement? Or is that not what the reality is?
Through the chair, the chair has a required hearing. So it's on the agenda because this is up to you.
Okay.
Am I willing to trade a one-time payment of $20,000 for a revenue loss of $6,000 a year for the tenor of the loan, 25 years? I'm not prepared to go that far.
Right, so then the question is though, is that an option for us though? Right? So they're saying they're not going to, they're not going to agree to this, they're just going to go, or are we playing poker here? Is this, we're playing, right, okay.
I think if you raise the price, then we maybe agree. Give us a little bit more.
We would agree to a pilot of $20,000.
Oh, your boss, maybe $50,000.
And that would be equivalent to about three years of the loss.
All right, everyone understands. Well, I'd like to make a motion to approve it with city staff's recommendation.
Second?
Got a first and a second, roll call, please.
I have a motion by Mayor Costellanos to approve staff's recommendation. I have a second by Councilman Wu. Councilmember Tabataba?
Uh, no.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lopez Viado?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Diaz?
Aye.
Mayor Costellanos?
Aye.
Item passes for one.
You gentlemen, brings us to the final item on the agenda, number 19, which is our code enforcement report.
It's great news. It's awesome.
I'm not going to tell you, ha, ha, ha.
That's fine. I don't need to know.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. We have an entire team of people here tonight.
All right.
To present our code enforcement overview. It's very impressive.
I know, thank you for staying throughout this whole night. I know, looking sharp.
And our code enforcement director has a pretty impressive overview in terms of statistics and a report about this function.
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity to present a overview of our current code enforcement program. I'd like to start out the program by introducing the field staff for the code enforcement division. Oftentimes, the council and the residents don't get to see who's actually doing the work out there. So I'd like to start out with, we have a code enforcement supervisor, Matthew Ariza. We have in service area one, full-time employee Emmanuel Leon. In service area two, we have Officer Jeremy Malici. In area three, we have Rosa Guerrero. In area four, we have Alberto Lopez. Those are our full-time staff. The full-time staff are complemented by a team of part-time officers, which includes Patrick Metoyer, Oscar Herrera, Abel Rodriguez, Mark Rubicava, Edgar Mayorga, Adam Davis, and Caesar Herrera. And none of us could operate without the support staff in the office. And with us tonight is our administrative person, Sarah Garcia, who handles most of our phone calls and stuff that comes in from the counter. So welcome, everybody. Thank you for showing up and staying tonight. We're going to start out with a brief overview.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you, guys.
So code enforcement's objective remains to gain voluntary compliance from property owners, business owners, and tenants whenever possible. In those cases where we have been able to achieve voluntary compliance through a series of written requests, or in those cases where the property owner, business owner, and/or tenant indicates that they will not correct the violation, additional enforcement actions may be taken. The code enforcement organizational chart, in 2020, the code enforcement division was formed and was comprised of one full-time manager and seven part-time officers. In July of 2022, the code enforcement division was reorganized to include one full-time manager, a full-time supervisor, four full-time officers, and six part-time officers. We've operated six months with two full-time employees, and we've only operated four months with the six full-time staff members along with the part-time. The code enforcement fleet of vehicles, currently, the code enforcement officers utilize a fleet of eight repurposed vehicles. We have, the officers have known new vehicles. We have three Ford Explorers that have been refurbished and just repainted that we got from the police department. The interiors still pretty beat up, but we did a quick paint job and made them look new, but they're not new. We have three Ford Escapes, which we've repurposed from Public Services Division. We've got one Crown Victoria that Chief Capelli gave us from the fire department that currently has 185,000 miles. We have also one F-150 pickup truck that we use, which our Public Services Department has let us use. And all the vehicles are at or approaching 100,000 miles. For the purpose of providing a balanced and level of patrol and enforcement in the city, the code enforcement division is broken into four service areas. Each service area has one dedicated full-time officer, supported by one or more part-time staff is available. Our service areas mirror the service areas that are used by our police departments. We have service area one north, two east, three central, and four south. In these slides, you'll see that within the different service areas, we have a very balanced number of cases through areas service one through four. We proactively survey every street in the city to capture violations that residents do not have to call in. We'd rather be proactive, get ahead of it. So when they do call and say something's out there, we've already got it in the file. The dots indicate where cases are geographically located in the different service areas. One of the things that we've, we utilize, one of the great tools we have that the council has brought on board is the West Covina Report and Issue app. It's a very valuable tool. It allows residents, business owners, to submit requests for service and have the appropriate staff respond and complete those requests in a timely manner. And it also provides the ability for staff such as myself to track and monitor requests that come in from the community and the business community. How the requests are reported, you'll see that we launched in 2020, and now through the first 10 months of 2022, you can see a drastic uptick in the number of resummateals through iPhone and Android, a lot less are having to be called in or sent in through our website. We have people, residents, throughout the community that are repeatedly submitting requests as they see them. They become the eyes and ears, and they assist us in the operation and the goal of cleaning the appearance of our city and resolving problems before they could become a bigger issue. I've broken down a survey here of 2022, all service requests submitted. This includes service requests not only for code enforcement, but for Public Works, Police Department, Fire. And you can see roughly so far this year, we've received a little over 14,000 requests from the field, from our resident community. And you'll see by the bar chart that for the most part, throughout the months, as the number of cases open, we're roughly closing the same number of cases, which means we're staying on top of our caseload overall. The next slide is specifically the code enforcement requests that come in from the community. Again, through the first part of November, we received roughly around 7,400, 7,500 requests for service. As you can see, as cases are accepted by the city, we're also resolving those cases and taking care of them in a timely manner. At no time do we have more than a handful of unresolved requests. The minute we receive them, our expectation is to have an answer and get it into the system and start working that issue within 48 hours of receipt at the latest. When we talk about our city code enforcement cases, people often ask, you know, how are they initiated and how did they start? You can see from this chart that over the past three years, we've increased the number of cases by being more proactive in the city. Again, the goal is to get out there, to survey and address issues before they become a bigger problem. If you look at the chart, code enforcement observations in 2020 was 1,875 for the entire year. Through the first 10 months or part of 10 months of this year, we're already at 3,800 proactive observations throughout the city. When you take all these numbers between code enforcement observations, resident concerns, city staff driving around, city management team reporting issues, anonymous calls, you'll see that 86% of all the cases that we handle in the city are on a city staff proactive basis. We're getting far less complaints from residents that we don't already have an active case on or an issue that we're already working. One thing you'll notice about my team, my operation, and how I run things, is I like everything to be uniform in style, including the way they dress and the way they handle their cases. So with all of our cases, they're provided with a standard case procedures. We always start out by doing an initial inspection to verify that there is a violation that needs to be addressed, or we do an inspection to confirm there is no violation. If it's a first-time violator, after we've identified a violation, we'll send what's called a courtesy notice, which is a very soft-worded notice, just advising with the municipal code section in violation and asking for their voluntary compliance. In cases of repeat violators, or if a case is of more significant in nature, we'll start off with a notice of violation, which is mailed to the property owner and all responsible parties for the subject property. That may include the tenants, business owners, or whoever's causing or continuing to allow a violation to occur. If the notice of violation does not resolve the issue, we will issue what's called a notice of administrative citation. And that's basically our final notice laying the person in violation, that if the issue is not resolved within a specific timeframe, we will issue a monetary citation. So when people say they've been cited by code enforcement, chances are they're referencing they've received a letter from us. We don't write as many monetary citations as we do issue letters. We issue a lot of letters. Let's talk a little about administrative citations. So if we issue a administrative citation, the person cited has 21 days to pay or to appeal the citation. I know there's been some discussion about quotas and are my staff required to write any number of citations? And the answer is no. In fact, the goal would be to not write citations. Our whole goal is to try to gain voluntary compliance. People that receive a citation is because they've ignored one, two, three, or more notices or other attempts to gain voluntary compliance. Now, I know there's been some discussion about what an administrative citation costs the person cited. Well, those are all set by a fee established through resolution by the city council. And for our municipal code violations, they're 100, 200, 500, if you were to receive a third citation. If you receive a citation for a, say, a trash can in public view, that would be a $40 citation. That one's called out differently in our municipal code, and subsequent violations could be $80. But again, that comes after more than three warning notices before a citation is ever issued. How many people receive a citation in the city based on our code enforcement cases, number of violations? We have a 93% compliance rate. So only 7% of the people that are receiving a letter or a code enforcement case from us actually receive a citation. In cases of health and safety issues, we deal with a lot of cases where maybe we have no running water, no electricity, people living in absolute slumlord conditions. In that case, our first action may be a citation. The staff would run the scenario past me, explain to me what they have, and if I felt that the best approach was to cite the person immediately to relieve the violation, that's an option that we have. Again, sticking with the idea of we're always trying to gain voluntary compliance, we do do office conferences, a lot of cities run them through city prosecutor's office. We attempt to do them in-house first before any referrals to the attorneys. So this is our final attempt to gain voluntary compliance at staff level. And the violator or violators are invited to come into city hall, they'll sit down in my office with the handling officer, and we'll discuss the case and try to establish some timelines and a solution to the problem, absent having to issue citations or take any other enforcement actions. If we run into a situation where we're unable to come to a realistic timeline for compliance, you know, we have the right and we will refer cases to our city prosecutor for further action. This is where we get into additional enforcement actions. So we could issue additional citations, which doesn't always prove effective, or other legal remedies, such as taking somebody to court, or seeking an abatement warrant to remove something from a property, maybe an abandoned vehicle or some trash. Or in cases where we have maybe an apartment complex or rental units that are in absolutely substandard, deplorable conditions, possibly taking that property into receivership and handling it that way. Again, through our city prosecutor's office, we have those options. Currently, we have about 20 cases that we are referring to the city prosecutor's office that have reached a stalemate where we're unable to gain voluntary compliance. The tools that we have in our toolbox have not been effective in solving the violations. When people ask, you know, how would you categorize your code enforcement cases? Well, most of them are going to be categorized as a public nuisance. And that's going to involve your basic trash and debris, overgrown vegetation, and just property, basic property maintenance. We also have the building and safety category, which would entail people, maybe a illegal garage conversion, or a dwelling that's been built without permits, something in violation of the building code that we address throughout the city. Abandoned vehicles on private property is a big issue. And under graffiti, you'll see that right now it says we have 293 cases of graffiti. Well, that number could be far higher, but my staff, now that we have full-time staff and we have some consistency and continuity in the division, my staff is working to build relationships with the business community and people that are victims of vandalism graffiti. So instead of sending them a notice of violation over and over that, hey, you got hit with graffiti, got hit with graffiti, we're making phone calls, emails, and making personal contact with people, just letting them know that, hey, your building got hit again, and then they work with us. So while that number is 293, those are primarily businesses that have allowed graffiti to sit on their property for an extended period of time and just need a little nudge to get their properties cleaned up. Let them know the city will remove graffiti in public right-of-ways on public property, but graffiti on private property needs to be resolved by either the property owner or the business owner. We start looking at the violations that we deal with within the code enforcement division. You'll see the most common is the trash and debris, overgrown vegetation. And one of the questions a community member asked me about was the trash can violations. Well, on here, you can see that we've identified and addressed 475 violations of trash cans in the city. Of that, of note, 345 of those violations were reported by just three residents. Of that, of note, 345 of those violations were reported by just three residents. The remaining 130 were reported by residents or staff initiated, and they were primarily because persons were using their trash cans for the purpose of reserving parking spaces. It's not so much that they were just in public view. People are using them to block off parking so when they come home, they have a place to park. So again, that's not a violation that staff is going out there and being real proactive on. The ones we're proactive on is when they're leaving stuff in the street that causes obstruction and they're reserving parking spaces. If you look at a three-year analysis here of open and closed cases and violations, you can see with the addition of the full-time staff and the stability of part-time staff, in 2022, so far, we've got, we've opened 4,779 code enforcement cases, closed 4,765, and addressed over 7,500 violations just in the first 10 months of this fiscal year, this calendar year. And you can see that there was a little down, we, in 2020, we had kicked off this program, so we dealt with quite a few violations. With a downturn in 2021, partly because we didn't have the staffing and we had a tough time retaining employees. But again, now that we're fully staffed, the numbers are picking up, we're remaining consistent in all service areas of the city. Next slide will show some action counts. You know, one of the things that I stress to my staff, that unless you document it, it didn't happen. So what I want them to always do is whatever action they take within a code enforcement case is to document it and put it enough description that any common reader, if they were to look at that case, would understand exactly what happened and why we took the actions we did. As you can see, just in 2022, since January, we've done 13,961 field inspections, which is a lot of inspections for staff. You'll also note that we've issued over 11,000 letters to violators in both the residential and business community. Not taken into account in this slide is the, often the unique and personal situations involved in each case. And my staff and I deal with those on a daily basis. There's some very challenging and personal stories in everybody's life that sometimes prevents them from bringing their property into compliance immediately, or a reason why their property looks the way it is, and we will deal with those on a case-by-case basis every day. One thing that you'll note and is highlighted in gold at the bottom is the time extensions on violations. The city, the code enforcement division recognizes that this time of our economy, that a lot of times people have, they want to fix the violation, but have an inability to do so for financial reasons. Both adults are working the family, are taking care of people within their household. So if you can see, in 2020, we granted 271 inspections, 2021, 311. And so far this year, we've already granted 1,082 inspection, or extensions. So if anybody's willing to work with us and gives us a call and asks for additional time, we will grant them the extension. The only time we will not grant an extension, if it's immediate life or safety issue. You know, if a slumlord calls and says, you know, I need additional couple of months to remove the mold or something, we're not going to grant an extension at that time. But if someone has a car, they have some property maintenance issues, they need additional time, they call, we'll work with them. My staff's very lenient, and I'm very lenient as far as that. Again, our goal is voluntary compliance, it's not to be heavy-handed. Under the category citizen complaints, you'll be saying, well, there's 4,473 complaints issued. A lot of times, people will call in about the same thing. So we have a property that's been graffitied. We may get 10 or 15 people that call in about that one property. We've got one active code enforcement case for that, but we do document that people are calling in and sending us a complaint. Again, you'll see that we've written about 1,015 citations so far. Again, 93% of the properties and cases in the city are resolved through voluntary compliance. The other 7% receive an administrative citation or more than one citation. So while it says 1,015 citations, some properties have received multiple citations, and those are the type cases that we'd be escalating to our city prosecutor's office. Items specific to 2022, starting in August, obviously through November, my staff was very busy dealing with election issues. We dealt with removal of signs placed on city property or in public right of ways, attached to utility poles, and we also stored signs for the candidates, returned them to the candidates at the end of the election period. But that was a busy time. We removed well over 400 signs total between the municipal, state, and other elections that were going on at the same time. Parking enforcement. In mid-November, I met with representatives of West Covina PD, specifically Captain Cortina, and talked about parking citations in the city. And said, we have problems, including like on Sentuus and Amanda, where cars are parking for an extended period of time. So in the third week of November, city code enforcement staff started to assist West Covina PD with the issuance of parking citations and the abatement of abandoned vehicles on public streets. Prior to that, that was always housed in the police department's realm. And tell you that in the first month of operations, we've written over 300 citations and worked to have over 100 vehicles removed off public streets that have been sitting there for an extended period of time. Again, in, we had a speaker talk about Amanda and Sentuus Avenue. So while I was sitting up top, I was able to look up some statistics in that area, and last Friday, we wrote 65 citations on those two streets for vehicles that were not moving for street sweeping and/or had been parked there for an extended period of time, including recreational vehicles, vehicles without registration. We've marked a lot of vehicles for towing, and once the vehicle's ready to be towed, West Covina PD will remove those vehicles. But the Amanda Sentuus area of town was an area that needed some attention. We deployed our staff, whether you were assigned to service area 1, 2, 3, or 4, we can redeploy and reassign people on any given day. So on Fridays, when it's street sweeping in that area, you'll see a contingent of officers out there making sure that people are following the posted sign regulations. One of the other areas that we're working to improve on is, for the benefit of the entire city, is code enforcement is working with West Covina PD on updating the emergency operations plan and working in collaboration with the police department. My staff will also serve as a emergency service disaster workers. The benefit of that is, in the event of a disaster or something major happening, my staff could man posts. Let's say we have an area where we just need to block off a street. It's a waste of resources to have a patrol car and a sworn police officer sitting there blocking a street for an extended period of time. My staff will be able to come in and relieve those people of those posts to free up law enforcement and fire to take care of more emergent circumstances. Part of the emergency operations plan will include training, drills, education, technology, coordination, and communications. We are currently working with West Covina PD, who has provided us now with some radios. So we'll be able to communicate live with police and fire in real time instead of having using cell phones, which improves not only officers' safety, but improves our operation as a city throughout. Moving forward, we can always be better, and we recognize that. And I hold my staff to the highest of standards, and every week, we talk about what we can do better. So one of the things we're going to keep doing as we move forward is to continue to work in collaboration with our community to address concerns, whether it's property maintenance, whether it's graffiti, whether it's infrastructure, we're going to work with people to address those issues. We're going to continue to work in collaboration with our city maintenance department, and not only our city staff, but my staff now is in, working with not only the city staff, but we're working with Caltrans, LA County Flood Control, LA County Public Works. Because often, issues that we see in the city and that are brought to our attention aren't the jurisdiction of city control. So we need the collaborative efforts of my staff to work with other entities to get areas cleaned. We're going to work closely with commercial and residential property owners to improve and update the appearance of our assets, which is again, the aesthetics of our community. Whether it's residential, commercial, every part of the city should look good. And again, we're going to always increase the training and development of our code enforcement officers to serve our community at the highest of capacities. At this time, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that presentation, Mylen. Do we have any, yes, let's give a round of applause. Does council have any questions for Mylen? Councilwoman Lopez-Viado?
So once again, thank you, thank you for being here all night. My first question is, are you reporting issues that are city's responsibility as well?
That's correct. So that's one of the areas, my staff, as they patrol the cities, not only are they proactive on what we handle, but they're also reporting sidewalk issues, streetlight issues, pavement issues, city properties, medians, those things, those are all being reported. And again, that falls back on us, that it's one thing to report the issue, it's another thing to follow up on it. So as we've moved forward, we are following up better on the stuff we have submitted to other divisions to handle. But again, the overall appearance of the city is of the utmost importance, and we are, they are submitting requests as they see them throughout.
Okay. And my next question is, how often do code enforcers engage with the community when giving or explaining the citation or writing letters or anything like that? And are they delivering exceptional customer service when doing so?
Well, without even looking at my staff, I can tell you that it's a mandate that they provide exceptional customer service. We converse through email, phone calls, in person. When we're driving down streets, if someone flags us down, does this, we're stopping, we're talking to them. If at any time anybody has a question, they're free to talk to any of my staff. We have a supervisor, you have a manager in the office all during the week. We're available 24/7, especially with the reported issue app, whether it's submitted at 2:00 in the morning or 6:00 in the morning, it goes live to the manager, to the supervisor, and also to the support staff. So whoever wakes up first can acknowledge that request and get it assigned to the appropriate people to get out there and get it taken care of.
Okay. My next question is, we had one resident complain about an unmarked vehicle. Currently, are they all driving unmarked vehicles? I know the pictures that you showed.
So currently, we, I've ordered the decals for the vehicles that do not have markings. So the vehicles that were brought up at a previous meeting were the three Ford Explorers that we got from police department, and they were pretty beat up. So we just took them for a quick paint job. And again, these were vehicles that were going to be salvaged or sent to auction. So we're in the process of getting those marked. And I can tell you that I take responsibility for not having those vehicles marked. I could have done it sooner, but based on my training, and people ask, why would you want to have an unmarked vehicle in the code enforcement division? Well, through FEMA and the California Office of Emergency Services, through my training in California Specialized Training Institute, and specifically in rapid needs assessment through the LA County Sheriff's Department, in the event of a disaster or an emergency, you know, everybody's looking for help. When a patrol car goes down the street, everybody's flagging down that patrol car, right? They see him, okay, hurr, stop, stop, I need help, I need help. Sometimes the purpose of having an unmarked vehicle is so you can actually drive through the streets without being stopped and do an accurate assessment of what needs to be done. I worked the Whittier quake, I worked the Northridge quake, I worked the riots. There were times when it was beneficial to have a vehicle not marked, so you could drive up and down the streets, check the infrastructure, check which signals were out, and report back under unified command to the command post to deploy the city resources in the best manner.
That could quickly be resolved. They actually have those magnetized. Just remove it when you need it and then put it on when you're utilizing it. Do they assist? I know like one resident was talking about the trash cans and that they're just going there and riding them trash cans. If needed, do they assist, get hands-on? I know I did call in right one time with all the posting that they put on city property, and I know you mentioned that if they see it, they'll remove it themselves, but of course, if it's too high, they'll involve maintenance. But for certain situations, if community members need assistance for, due to their abilities, or you know, seniors, do they help out?
We help out wherever we can, specifically with trash can issues. If somebody has the inability to bring out or take back their trash cans, we refer them to Athens for that. It's one of those things you open Pandora's box. If we help one person move their trash cans, I'm going to have every resident wanting their trash cans moved by staff.
Okay. And my last question is, do you give out resources such as like the CDBG programs for anything that is for the repair so that they are aware to be able to comply with the code enforcement?
Absolutely. So one of the things I've provided each of my staff is what I call a go-bag. Within that bag, they carry all the materials they need, including the handouts of our grant and loan programs to hand out to residents. When we converse through email, we also have PDF copies that we can send to people, and we also enclose them in letters for people, to provide them with the resources to make repairs, where maybe they have the inability financially to make them. But yes, in all avenues, we try to stress again, gain voluntary compliance. If we can help you with a grant program, we provide that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Tabata.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick question and a comment. First, is that the standard daily uniform of code enforcement?
Yes, it is.
Fantastic. And then just a comment on what Councilwoman Letty Lopez-Viado said. If we can make sure all the cars are marked, I do know that to have visibility also plays a role in crime prevention. So if you have authority driving through streets and things like that, things like petty crimes and things don't happen. So I think to have the cars, all the cars marked, actually does play a very big public safety benefit. I mean, I understand the concern of a major incident that you were speaking of, but on a daily, to have all cars marked really, really does play that role.
No, I agree with you completely on that one. Again, I take responsibility for those cars not being marked sooner. But when the cars are marked, it does become a force multiplier. So while you see police and fire, now you see another eight vehicles driving up and down the street that say, you know, city of West Covina. It lets us know the city does care, we're up and down, we're out and about, and we're visible to the public.
Councilman Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, and just quickly, okay, I hope, okay, and I want to follow through my two council member regarding the mark card. Okay, I think it's necessary, okay? I mean, all the card, the city staff, with that beautiful uniform, okay, army of code enforcement, and with our vehicle, with the code enforcement, is another show to the resident that city is doing the job, okay, and driving around and show our city presence. And then next thing I want to say is, I've been mentioned many times, first, we're so happy to have you since 2019, and then until today, and then now, we finally give the, we went through COVID in 2020, and gradually coming out 2021, now 2022. Finally, we have a full staff, and we changed our budget to have a full, full-time staff and staff, okay, to make your department well-rounded and can do the job. So here is the suggestion and the sum of criticism, I want to construct a criticism regarding what I went through, okay? And I hope all the code enforcement officer will step in my shoes and know what I'm talking about is, and I want you not only find the city, find the resident, you want to find the city too. City has a lot of issue, okay? And I walk three months every day, and I see a lot of problem about the city regarding our sidewalk, and they have regarding our side sidewalk and they have uneven a lot. And then you have a weed coming out all the places and you have a tree coming with a potentially issue and that should be done by you guy. And, uh, and I know our, uh, okay, code enforcement manager, Mylan, have you guys report to the public work or even the police? But nothing get done because I report to them, okay? And then then it will be taken care, but something, if I didn't report it, either thing will be there for weeks or even longer. So hopefully you guys not only right the problem, you guys should chase the city with the right department to take care of that problem. For example, okay, and they have a tree branch dropping on the sidewalk, that should be instantly contact the public work to remove that branch. That is liability to the city. And I saw that branch over there for a couple of days. Then finally I took a pictures, I bring it to the public work. And the same thing, you go to the shadow oak area, you see a lot of overgrown tree, you see the, they walkway, you see the overgrown and the, the lie of the walk, walkway lie is like only 50% lit. That should be reported to the proper department that has them to fix it because less liability issue to the city. So we need to really taking care, not just write a report. My suggestion is you have to chase the proper channel, a proper department to fix the problem. So this is my big suggestion and request that, that if we want to request our resident to clean up the city, but if the city property is not clean, just like I asked my kid, clean up their room, but my room is so messy, the kids say, hey, clean up your room first, Dad. Am I right? So, 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 so I have to make an example, okay, to tell the resident, our city is nice and beautiful, don't let your property ruin it. So we have to make example for that. So I really strongly request and I have request city manager, I requested our co-enforcement. And that's why you guys over here, we want a beautiful, presentable city and the predominant our city property sometimes is a issue. Our park, homeless, encampment, all those issue, where have you become our eye, our ear, our feet? You have to put the boots on the street and walk into the park like what I did. You guys have to do it too and report the situation and fix the thing. Am I right, Mylan?
Yes, you are, sir.
You sound like my answer to my wife. Yes, sir, dear. You're always right, okay? No, I, I, this is something, something is very, very important, okay? And how we can work together is how you are very valuable to the city. So, so first I want to welcome you first. Finally, we can identify the face, the faces. The second thing, I just want to encourage you as a city council, as a resident, one of the resident of West Covina for 35 years, we want a proud, clean, and beautiful city. And that's why we spend money, okay, revenue and budget to have you guys, okay? We're not here to try to harass our resident. We want you here to beautify our city and especially the common area, the park, okay, the walkway, okay? And the south side, just like the lady talking about the Santos, I saw it myself, myself, it's, it's really bad, okay? And I called the police, called the, uh, uh, city manager, probably won't, they, they show up, clean it right away. But again, our city staff is not a street cleaner, it should be cleaned by the street sweeper. But the point is, is car park over there, they cannot sweep. So when you call enforcement, now you have the power, now you have to find or tow the car away. They have a lot of abandoned car, okay, all the places. So hopefully this the time, first time I talk to you, next time I will say, good job, not give you a rant about, wow, you didn't do this, do that. You know, I'm a long-winded, okay? So, but, but really please help us to clean the city, okay? And make sure all the flop recorded, some stop sign, drop fail, or why they didn't put it back. Yeah, I have a complaint from the resident. So make sure you saw it, okay? You see it, you right away and chase the proper department. We make sure our, any, all the department accountable, responsible for their job. They need to do it. They get paid by taxpayers' money, we hire them to do their job. So that is your job to make sure all the flop, not only report the flop, you have to fix the flop, fix the issue quickly, okay? You guys agree with me? Yeah, thank you so much.
They learn from you, Mylan. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, uh, Mayor Proton?
Oops. Thank you, Mayor. Um, my first question is, is this your whole staff?
Yes, it is.
You're not missing anyone here?
I'm not missing anybody.
Yeah, true dedication.
The entire.
The entire department.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just showing the dedication, they're all here.
Um, the other thing is, I, I agree with Councilman Wu. If you see something, you say something. If you see branches or things that are broken, report it, communicate with each of the different, uh, departments. I would really appreciate that because it's really hard for us to be able to control or watch or see and report everything. So I would really appreciate if you do that. It would really, it would help the city a lot and, um, if we all work together. And Mylan, I think this is an excellent presentation. Thank you so much. And, um, I did see one of you guys, um, trying to pull down that sign that was way up high and he brought his own ladder. And, uh, I was impressed.
Who was that? Raise your hand.
I'm Reseda Lark Allen. And, um, I saw him there removing the ladder and getting up there. It was a, it was a stick, I think, that he was getting out, yeah. So thank you. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for your work.
Councilman Wu.
Okay. Don't worry, not, not going to have a long speech. I'm going to walk around, okay? And I want to make sure what I mentioned, that have been taken care. So that the problem, that dropping the branch, this and that, on the south side, north side, east, west side, hopefully you don't see something over there and never been reported or never been fixed, okay? So make sure our proper department will take care, the police department or, okay, our public work department, make sure, okay, they will do their job or our contractor, okay? I will just approve the contractor to do the sidewalk. So make sure they do their job properly and that is you, you are our eye and you are our ear. And again, okay, if the, the staff don't do it, okay, the public department, write a report to us, let us know. So we will, as city manager, to be responsible for that. So anyway, we will support you to do a good, good job and great job, but thank you so much.
Any more comments, questions?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for continuing to keep our city clean, safe, and beautiful. And that's what I know most of the council wants and the residents would love to have. So we greatly appreciate, um, that. So thank you again.
Keep up the good work, everyone. Thank you for being here, especially this late. Mylan, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
I do, I just do want one, I mean, when this ends, I do want one group photo. You guys are all looking sharp, all uniformed and even have your pens there on the side. So at the end, at the end of the meeting, just before you leave, one quick photo. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? It ends?
All right. Well, that, that ends our item number, yes, and I will too. Um, that ends our item number 19, code division update.
Yeah. Yeah. Let's end the meeting quick.
That's what I'm trying to do. If I have a chance. Okay, uh, request, uh, council reports, requests or comments?
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, regarding last time, okay, and a couple meeting away, and our mayor Proton and proposed $50,000 for Gabby, um, okay, award to try to break the case. And I think we approved $50,000, um, to have let and the family, and they have a $50,000. So we add together, it's about $100,000. Gabby's murder till January is two years already. So we still doesn't, we still don't have any of a crew or any update or anything. So, so the city have, city promote this $100,000 award to the public. So I request, we need to have a press release and, uh, let people, we probably know, we have this tragedy and Gabby deserved the justice, okay? We need to make sure public know the city provide $50,000 and the award plus, I think county provide 15,000, they chip, okay? And then you have another $35,000 from the family. So all add together, it's about $100,000. So, so city manager, when we can have a this press release? You can do it right away, okay? And then make sure police department know it, okay? Uh, we can get maybe hopefully with $100,000, we can get a lead, maybe break the case. I think we need to get a closure for the family. So, uh, so this is the, the first thing, okay? And nobody against, right?
No, I, I support that.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, okay. The second one, uh, the second request, we are going to another note, this note was more happier, okay? And, uh, Razan, would you please come in? Okay? Uh, this is about next year, 2023, centennial, and we should be, have a lot of celebration, okay? So we need to make sure all our promotion, everything will be centennial, hundred year. We only have one time, hundred year. When you become 101, nobody care, but 100, everybody care. Hundred is difficult. Nobody can live hundred years, this is rare, but so hundred years, okay? So we need a centennial, so we are going to do a lot of celebration. Can we do some promotion? It's kind of branding the city. So like, for example, we have a centennial, so Razan, would you please come in? Okay? And regarding how we can do centennial, okay? Like for example, centennial festival, centennial summer, summer concert, centennial July 4th, centennial, everything's centennial. So everything next year, right? And we need a big banner put on the, okay, on the Benson Avenue or, okay, the major street, put a, West Covina celebrates centennial 2023. I think this is a big deal for city, uh, going to a birthday for hundred years. So this is a, uh, another, another request, uh, for that. Want to say something?
Through the chair, if I may. So just like you said, um, Councilman Wu, um, with the city's centennial coming up, um, wow, next year, a couple of months, actually.
Couple of months.
Typically, what?
Couple of days.
What's extra special about the centennial is that it's a big milestone for the city. So really exactly what you said, branding all of the city events, enhancing them so that they're a little bit more special, more meaningful for members of our community. Just making sure that they're inclusive, um, so that our residents feel welcome and have that sense of pride and joy, um, when they attend our, um, centennial celebrations. I think that the other key component to that too, is involving our community members, is involving our nonprofit groups such as, um, the West Covina Historical Society. I think that they, um, are definitely a, a cornerstone member of the community and it's important that they have a role and have a place. Uh, and again, just making sure that the residents of the community.
Everybody included, yes.
Exactly. Exactly.
I, I think so important is you need to start promoting, starting printing, starting put a banner because it's only, what, February 17th, right? Okay, so that is the day. So we need to kind of right now, with this holiday season, we can starting put a banner out and then, and promoting for our, okay, and the Discover, uh, Discover West Covina, all the this addition, we can tell people next year, okay, is our hundred years of birthday and, uh, all the press release, we should put a logo, centennial.
Correct.
I think this would be really branding the city.
Correct. And, and just because you didn't mention Discover, one of the things that I want to point out is that we, our centennial issue, um, is slated to be released early. So right now we're looking at the end of January, beginning of February for the centennial issue. And then moving forward from that, having excerpts of the history of West Covina and the Discover, just so that our community members get to learn and, um, get to, to know more about the community that they're a part of.
Yeah. And, and the last one, don't worry, last one.
You're fine.
Last one. Number three one.
It's okay.
Okay, I just want.
Keep them, keep them coming.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can have a one-on-one meeting after.
Yeah, I'm going to have another half hour. Number three, I just want to thank you, okay? The latest snow is nothing but spectacular, okay? And, uh, last meet, last one, I have a doubt, but this one, I have no doubt at all, okay? You, uh, you, you made it, okay? It's so successful, the staff so friendly and helping all the kid. And, uh, I slide down, I didn't break my bone, but it's such a, a enjoyment, okay? And you see all these eyes, okay, snow and the kids happy and you have a so many people, so many happy children. It's that sense of community, that is something we so know for, for a long time. So I just want to thank you. I'm done. Thank you so much.
You're, you're welcome. And if I may, you know, the community services division, we're truly humbled to be a part of this community and we're very privileged that you have, the council as a whole has the confidence that they do in the community services department, division. So we thank you for that and we won't let you down. So thank you, as a whole, the council. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Great job.
Uh, Councilman Tabata.
Yes, uh, Roxanne, before you leave, I actually do also have a request. Uh, and, and in the spirit of, uh, Councilman Wu, uh, you know, next year is, uh, the centennial and we are going to have so many celebrations. And I think, uh, this council and the staff has, has been, has really done a great job of acknowledging, uh, all, all the different, um, community members with all the different kinds of events that we're having. Uh, and so, uh, I, I actually would like to request, uh, that next year in the 100th year of, of the city, uh, that we actually, um, have our, our first, uh, pride event, uh, in, in June. Uh, I know that, uh, the city manager, um, was, um, acknowledged pride when he put up the, the pride flag over Dodger Stadium when we opened up the sportsplex, which, uh, had a lot of residents, uh, reach out to me and, and we're very thankful that, uh, you acknowledged that. Uh, and I think, uh, like I said, this council and the community has done a, a great job of really trying to be inclusive. Uh, and I know that we're finalizing our calendar for events. Uh, I know with what just happened in Colorado Springs, I think it's, uh, it's a great opportunity for our city, uh, to acknowledge, um, all the folks that are in the community and, uh, that, that would be, um, my request.
Understood.
Any other requests?
I thought it was my request.
If none more, I have one final one, uh, which will be my last one since next meeting is ceremonial. Um, I would like to give direction, if I have support, to, um, for city staff to study, counsel, uh, not only pay and benefits, but also, um, account for expenditures and to see what other cities do, to see what's in our budget, see what's feasible. This job is tough, we endure a lot. I think the current pay is too low and given the fact that this is my last meeting, I make that request for study. And do I have support for that?
I support you.
Uh, I think we should including the commissioner.
Commissioners as well. And so that'll give staff time to look into that and bring it back for the next council to discuss. That's my final request and any other comments?
Can I motion to adjourn?
You sure can.
Then I would like to motion to adjourn. I like to motion. I'm motioning.
Go ahead.
He has a gavel to make it happen and make it official.
And thank you for that. This concludes our meeting and my final one. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.